Good evening and welcome to the June 18th meeting of the Media Borough Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First, I'd like to have everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is the approval of minutes from the May meetings. First item on our agenda is the May 1st, 2025 workshop meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the May 1st, 2025 council workshop meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next item are the May 15, 2025 council legislative meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the May 15, 2025 council meeting minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Before we open up for public comment and privilege of the floor, you will notice that one of our members of council is not with us this evening. Vice President Liz Romaine is not able to be with us tonight. Her report will be handled later on this evening by Ms. Lisa Gelman, Councilmember Lisa Gelman, and I will be handing the gavel over to President Protem Washington for my report. We'll now move on to public comment and privilege of the floor. You have two opportunities during our meetings to make a public comment, and there also are two ways to do so. You may stand and state your name and speak, or you may send an email to comments@mediaborough.com. Mr. Pino, do we have any emails?
I do. I do. This is comment from Augie and Michelle Pantellas and Jeffrey Gray. No addresses provided. The Delaware County Courthouse employees and patrons have enjoyed the benefit of Augie's hot dog stand for over 45 years. This mobile food business is currently Jeffrey Gray's primary source of income, not just some fun hobby. He uprooted his family to start a new life here in Delaware County with hopes of continuing our well-established business. With this proposed ordinance, this committee has decided that two days per week will be enough, without any regard for how this will impact our families. The comments go on to mention the chaos in front of the courthouse. In closing, I am compelled to respond to the comment that Lisa Gelman made at the June 5th meeting suggesting that my husband has been there long enough and should give someone else a chance. That comment is discriminatory and evidence that some of the members of your committee are not interested in supporting a longtime beloved business owner of media in his senior years. Please keep these things in mind when you vote on this mobile food vendor ordinance.
Thank you. Any others?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, I do have some comments for that issue, but I'll wait till my report when the ordinance is up for vote. Is there anyone present who would like to speak? Please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Unger. I live at 500 North Jackson Street. I have a two-part comment today. I wanted to thank Borough Council for continuing to work on an effective resolution to the street vending issue. It has been an unfortunate circumstance, and I think you have worked through it extraordinarily well. I would encourage folks who are concerned with the borough's resolution and resolution to the issue to address any further concerns about vending on county property to the county themselves. My second point of consideration for Borough Council, in light of increasingly drastic weather challenges and air quality issues that face our community regularly, and given that we have many Borough employees who spend a significant portion of their day working outside, including police officers, I would call on Borough Council to direct the EAC to investigate options for securing a local Borough weather monitoring solution, particularly as regards air quality. I think that there is a significant potential for the Borough to take step forward in both protecting its employees and providing relevant local information for residents, given that broader weather services aren't particularly local to us, like the Weather Center in Mount Holly. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. One comment, though. The ordinance that we are passing is not regarding county property. It's only involving the borough's right-of-way. Thank you. Any other, anyone else present care to make a comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to our Borough Manager's Report. Ms. Foreman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening to everyone. I have a number of items to share, just to give an update with the departments. First, Finance completed its first draft of the annual comprehensive financial report. This is a new report for us. It's going to be submitted to GFOA at the end of this month, which is the Government Financial Officers Association. It includes an introductory section with economic and demographic information, includes audit and financial information, and supplemental information, which will describe how our borough is operating with performance indicators per department over time, property assessment information over time. It's really interesting information, it's a really comprehensive picture of our finances and our operations. And so, wanted certainly to say a job well done to our finance department and by our Acting Finance Director, John Skovich. It's really a new level of transparency into our finance and operations. So, it will be posted online, and I encourage residents to take a look at it. Secondly, Speaking of Finances, our audit was completed by Barbara Kane-Florton, and they presented to the Finance Committee yesterday, and I'm pleased to report that we have a clean audit, no findings, no material weaknesses, no internal control issues. And so, it's pretty much a smooth process this year, again, thanks to the Finance Department, and we're really pleased with the results. Moving on to Codes. Codes is currently working with the consultants on the Comp Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, and surveys have been closed. They had over 400 participants in that survey, community survey, and so now they're in the process of doing the focus groups with different stakeholders related to issues like housing, transportation, facilities, the environment. So, that Comprehensive Plan process is ongoing. I did want to mention with EMS, as I mentioned to you at the workshop, we had, there was a meeting with regional municipalities to talk about a long-term regional authority for EMS ambulance service, and there was a model there from the Little Caesars area, and we were looking at it and listening to it to see if it could be applicable to Delco. It looked really promising. But one thing I did learn is that it's going to take some time to get up and running, even if we do that route. You know, he said about a year, a year and a half to even get it up and running. So, we are going to continue to have conversations with the Media Fire Company in the short term to figure out solutions and make sure that we can continue advanced life support here in the borough. So, I'll keep you guys updated about that. And finally, the administration brought a table at Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs at the annual conference where we were honoring our mayor, Bob, for receiving a distinguished service award. It was a wonderful, wonderful event, and we certainly just want to continue to uplift his service that he's had for decades, and we appreciate all that you've done, Mayor. I don't know if anyone who was there wants to mention anything about that, but that concludes my report.
Thank you. I was there. It was quite a wonderful opportunity to celebrate our mayor in front of municipalities from all over the Commonwealth. I mean, there were people from the far northeast corner, the far southeast corner, southwest and northwest, and the center of Pennsylvania. Really, it was a neat experience, and I'm very proud to serve in a community that has had a mayor of such renown. So, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Foreman? Great. Moving on now, we will have our engineers' report. Mr. Mattson is not able to be with us this evening. He did leave a report in our Dropbox, so if there's any questions, you can direct them directly to him. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to highlight, Ms. Foreman?
I can, if you wish. I would just mention that Funk Street Mall is moving along really well.
Yes.
We are still in the process of finishing the site furnishings and getting the shade structure up and getting it electrified. He goes, "Supposed to be scheduled to be on-site later this week."
Wonderful.
To get the electricity on, which means the fountain will be on, and we'll be having furniture showing up, you know, over the next coming week. So, we appreciate everyone's patience, we appreciate the business community's patience, as this has been a long project, but the end product is going to be beautiful.
And many, many thanks to the local businesses that put up with that. Jaco Taco and Cafe Isla, Yoga, Sarva Yoga. And there's one more.
Deals.
Deals, thank you. Yes, deals, of course. If there are no questions, we can move on to our Solicitor's Report. Ms. Burns.
Thanks, Council President. The Solicitor does not have a report tonight, and I will yield my time back. Thanks.
Thank you. Hearing no, are there any questions for the Solicitor? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Mayor's Report. We'll start with the Police Report. Mr. Mayor?
Hey, thank you. This is one of the highest we've had in years. Complaint log. 737 complaints. Among them, I'm not going to read them all, but 44 alarms, 63 assistance, domestics 10, disorderly conduct 12, harassment only 7, 44 involuntary commitments, medical emergencies 69. That's one of the highest we've ever had. Got a couple pages. Motor vehicles 30. We had 104 traffic stops. That's the highest we ever had. Motor vehicles 2. Robberies, just 1. Sex crimes, just 1. Traffic accidents, 29. That's a little separate. Traffic details, 41. So, that's a total of 70 for that. So, I think that's about it. It is. 737.
Wow, thank you.
The police have been working a lot.
And I'd like to take a moment of privilege to just thank our police department. It has been a very difficult month with a lot of things happening in the borough that were not done by residents of the borough, and our police department performed spectacularly well. I'm proud to be a resident. I'm proud to have them protecting our residents in Media Borough, and that's about all I can say. So, make sure that they get, and get to hear that. So, thank you, Chief McCormick, and everyone else in the department. Next up is a proclamation for Pride Month, and the mayor asked me to read it because it was my idea. Last week, we held the, I guess, the third annual Delaware County Pride Parade in Media, and County Council Chair, Dr. Monica Taylor, read their resolution declaring Delaware County as a safe county for the LGBTQ+ community. And I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that, so the mayor, you know, I'm going to steal your thunder, but I'm going to read it. You're going to sign it, but I'm going to read it. So, it is Borough Media Proclamation Number 2025-02, supporting a declaration of Delaware County as a safe county for the LGBTQ+ community. Whereas Delaware County, Pennsylvania is a diverse and inclusive community that values dignity, rights, and contributions of all residents, and whereas the Delaware County Council has introduced a resolution to formally declare Delaware County a safe county for the LGBTQ+ community, affirming its commitment to protecting the rights and safety of LGBTQ+ individuals and promoting a culture of respect, inclusion, and equality; and whereas the safety, security, and equitable treatment of LGBTQ+ residents, employees, and visitors are vital to the health, prosperity, and vibrancy of our county; and now therefore be it resolved that the Borough Council of Media, Pennsylvania hereby expresses its strong support for the resolution declaring Delaware County a safe county for the LGBTQ+ community; and be it further resolved that Media Borough Council encourages all municipalities, organizations, and residents within Delaware County to promote inclusivity, stand against discrimination, and work collectively to ensure that all people, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are treated with dignity, respect, and fairness. Proclaimed June 18th, 2025, Robert McMahon, Mayor of Media. Thank you. Any questions for the mayor? Hearing none, we will move on now to our Council Committee Reports. So, we'll move on to Transportation. Councilmember Trey Herman. Mr. Herman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no liaison announcements this time, so I will begin with my Traffic Education Topic of the Month. This month's topic is speeding. While driving in the streets of Media Borough, it's important to remember to follow the speed limit in order to keep our borough safe for pedestrians and vehicles. Speeding is a key contributing factor for accidents, injuries, and property damage. There is good news. There is a solution to all of these issues. It's called slowing down. Please be mindful of Media Borough's 25 mile-per-hour speed limit. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has detailed reports that monitor types and classes of accidents related to speeding. Please educate yourself on their very informative website, www.nhtsa.gov. The Delco Vision Zero Initiative, which is being adopted by Media Borough, contains a pledge to renew your vows of your driver's license. I'm sure the day you received your license was a very happy occasion, and what better way to promote awareness, ensure compliance, and celebrate safe streets than with a pledge and promise to keep our streets safe?
Thank you. All right. Those are fun to read.
Moving on, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-29, the adoption of Delaware County's Vision Zero Policy, which I will read a portion of.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I will read. Whereas Vision Zero is a comprehensive strategy to eliminate all traffic-related deaths and severe injuries while promoting safe mobility for all; and whereas the health and safety of its residents is the utmost priority of Media Borough; and whereas implementation of a Vision Zero strategy will improve resident health and safety, expand transportation options, and encourage the economic and environmental resiliency of Media Borough; whereas Media Borough will join Delaware County and municipalities around the nation in committing, committing to the elimination of traffic-related fatalities and injuries by the year 2050. Now therefore it be resolved that Media Borough does hereby affirm to, that even one death or serious injury on its roads is too many.
That's real stuff. Great. Thank you. Any more discussion?
Mr. President, I just wanted to add in addition to this resolution related to safety and aligning with the Delaware County, this also allows us to apply for federal, for federal and state grants, because it is an actual approved safety action plan, so this has multiple benefits.
One of which I believe is coming up, assuming that this goes affirmatively. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Foreman. So, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2025-29, adoption of Delaware County's Vision Zero Policy, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, I'd like to make a motion for ordinance Number 1173 of 2025, establishing a 10-minute free parking in the State Street District.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
So, one thing I want to add is that this motion, that this ordinance is largely in support of, you know, feedback from our business community as they have voiced their opinions about parking in the State Street District.
And I think we should also clarify that this applies to use of the app, not the kiosks, and not, I'm not sure about the meters, but it is only working in the Passport App.
Yes.
Yep, that's an important distinction to make. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving ordinance Number 1173 of 2025, establishing 10-minute free parking in the State Street District, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement for bids for traffic calming project at Fifth Street and Providence Road.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of authorizing the advertisement for bids for traffic calming project at Fifth and Providence? Let me restate that. All those in favor of authorizing the advertising of bids for the traffic calming project at Fifth Street and Providence Road, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Last one here. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement for bids for traffic calming project at Lemon and Jefferson Streets.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of authorizing advertising for bids for the traffic calming project at Lemon and Jefferson Streets, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Herman? Hearing none, I will move on to Properties and Public Works. Councilmember Joy Washington, Ms. Washington?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no liaison announcements and no reports for tonight.
I love it.
Yes, me too.
Any questions for Councilmember Washington? Hearing none, I'll move on to Finance and Media Business Authority. Generally Vice President Liz Romaine, she is not here this evening, and her report will be delivered by Councilmember Lisa Gelman. Ms. Gelman?
Thank you, Mr. President. The liaison announcements are just that I wanted to give high praise to our financial department, as our Borough Manager just said, they delivered a clean audit and delivered our first annual, is that correct? The first annual comprehensive financial report and financial statement audit, which was very exciting, and we just saw the first draft, so you guys will be seeing this soon. Our first legislative item is the proposal for AccurSure to perform their actuary services. As discussed at workshop, this is mostly due to the, or entirely due to the name change from Mockenheimer.
Mockenhaupt.
Mockenhaupt, there you go. So, I bring that forth as a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded twice. Any discussion of the matter? All those in favor of accepting the proposal for AccurSure, thank goodness, it's easier to pronounce, to perform actuarial services, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, we have an amendment to the Passport Software License and Service Agreement to facilitate billing credits. This is to assure that the borough receives, so $28,000 due to the borough from the amendment to the fee schedule that was done prior this year. So, I bring that forth in the form of a motion.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the amendment to Passport Software License and Service Agreement to facilitate billing credits, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Lastly, we have the ratification of our May bills. In general funds this month, we have $581,207.10 in Liquid Fuels Fund, there is $0. In the Recreation Fund, there is 4,985.20, and the Capital Fund is $376,328.20, for a total of $962,520.32.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor of ratifying the payment of bills for May and the amounts that Councilmember Gelman just shared, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes the report.
Any questions for Councilmember Gelman? Please, no. So, thank you. All right. On to my report, and I will pass the gavel over to Ms. Washington. Liaison announcements, we did not meet with Planning Commission this month. They will be meeting next month, and I may have a couple of items for us in July at our legislative meeting. Again, there is no workshop meeting in July this year. As our manager mentioned, CDC will be attending another meeting of the Comprehensive Plans Steering Committee, which is next week. I believe that's Monday evening?
Yeah.
Yeah, Monday evening. So, that will be something, we'll have a report for you for next month as well, and, you know, that's pretty much it. We have a couple of items for business on the agenda. The first item is Ordinance Number 1174 of 2025, regulating mobile food vending services. And I think before we vote on this, I should give a little background on how we got here. Several months ago, and it's several months ago, I have quite a few.
Started in December.
It was in December. It was seven months ago. We were approached with some issues that had been going on in front of the courthouse, and concerns about how businesses were treating one another, and our police department had gotten involved, and one of the things that was brought up was Health Department-related, and we are no longer running a Health Department now that Delaware County has taken over. But we also thought it was an appropriate time to really revisit the idea of mobile vending and what we wanted for our residents and what, as a Borough Council, we thought was appropriate. You know, there was a lot of emotional discussion back and forth, there were a lot of emotions brought up. We had several options. We could have downright just said no to any more mobile vending. We could have put the two carts at different corners, which would have put one of the carts with an inability to do any business in the borough. You know, we came up with what I believe to be a solution that serves the needs of the borough and puts us in a position where it's not really our role to deal with arguing parties back and forth. I also would like to make it very clear that in no way was Councilmember Gelman's comment discriminatory in the least. So, I just, I wanted to state that in her defense. We, you know, we had a difficult decision to make, but it's not our role to tell people to play nicely in the sandbox. It's our job to determine what's best in the interests of Media Borough. And this ordinance will go back to, I believe, a workable solution for everyone, where there will be two permits that are provided, Permit A and Permit B. Once this is adopted, and maybe around July 1st, we'll start accepting applications, is that correct?
For the permit applications, they will be available by July 1st.
By July 1st, yes, just to make that clear. There will be Permit A and Permit B.
Oh, sorry. And the ordinance will go into effect on August 1.
In August.
Yes.
On August 1st. So, until August 1st, we'll deal with what we have. But it's, Permit A would allow for one vendor to apply and have rights to be at the courthouse Monday, Wednesday, and Permit B would allow a vendor to be there on Tuesday, Thursday. And that was what we came up with as, you know, we thought was the best solution for all involved, and certainly mostly for Media Borough and its right-of-way property. You know, it is Media Borough's right-of-way, right on that sidewalk, so that's one of the reasons that, you know, we want to take this action. So, one of the things that's included is a very stringent requirement for health, you know, monitoring. Our code enforcement officer is going to check it out. Our fire marshal, who is the same individual, will also check out safety, make sure that any cart that is going to be there will meet those requirements. There will be a fee that will be required annually for anybody wishing to perform mobile vending at those locations. And if there is any future circumstance where police need to get involved, we reserve the right as Borough Council to revoke that license. So, you know, that, if I missed anything, so, pretty much.
Before we pull this to a vote, thank you, Council President, Pecoff. I, excuse me, I re-reviewed the ordinance this afternoon, and I had a couple grammatical nits that I put into a new version, but also one-
new version, but also one sentence that I added in to address something that we discussed at workshop and CDC, and it would be a friendly amendment. I believe it was councilperson Galvin who wanted to differentiate between the vendors in front of the courthouse, permit A and permit B, and also the mobile food vendors that would be regulated as part of mass gathering permits, which now this ordinance does. There's nothing changed with respect to the mass gathering permit section, however, we wanted to make sure that whoever would be operating in front of the courthouse using permit A or permit B would be using carts only, i.e. non-motorized vehicles, so they can't just drive a truck onto the designated space. So to that effect, I added in one sentence to the section of the ordinance that would amend or create Section 173-22B subsection I. It will now read, "Limited location and type of vendors. Only one mobile food vendor shall operate within the district at any one time, and such operation shall occur only in the one space designated by the code enforcement officer, the designated space." The following is the sentence I added in, "Only mobile food vendors operating out of a non-motorized vehicle may operate in the designated space." So that would be the substantive amendment that you would see in the final version that you would sign, and I just wanted to make council aware of that tonight.
Great.
In addition to some nits.
Thank you, and again, we will make sure that we have the correct language checked, and that'll be what is signed should we approve this. Thank you. Are there any, I'll move that as in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. For ordinance.
I just want to say that, yes, as said before, we have been talking about deliberating and figuring out ways to move forward with this since December, so this is not an issue that was taken lightly, this was not an issue that was given little attention, in fact, it was given a great deal of our attention. So I just wanted to put an exclamation point behind that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. For ordinance number 1174 of 2025, regulating mobile food vending services, voting in favor of this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. My next item is Resolution 2025-30, authorizing the submission of an SS4A grant application for improvements to the Five Points intersection, and I will make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I believe this is one of the items, Ms. Foreman, that will be accessible to us now that we have approved the Vision Zero Plan.
Yes, this is a federal grant, you have to have an action, a safety action plan, and the Delaware County's Vision Zero Plan counts as that, and so because we have adopted that now, we are able to go out for implementation grants for the Five Points area that has also been identified in the Vision Zero Plan, and also has been identified in our own, you know, our own traffic calming plan, so it's a good combination of using the planning efforts at the county and the local municipality to go after federal grants.
Great. Okay, with no other discussions on the motion, call a question. In favor for Resolution Number 2025-30, to authorize the submission of the SS4A grant application for improvements to the Five Points intersection, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, that concludes my report. Moving on now, we'll go to Public Safety, Recreation, and the Civil Service Commission, Councilmember Kevin Boyer, Mr. Boyer?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have some announcements from REC. First of all, happy announcement, I'd like to congratulate Kelly Dixon, she got married this past Saturday, so Kelly and Matt, we wish them a lot of luck, so congratulations to them. Some other announcements from REC, this past Saturday, REC, I guess you could say hosted, but kind of organized the Second Annual Garden Tour, whether it was the greatest, but I did see some neighbors preparing their gardens, so hopefully that was well attended. I'll remind you that REC does a lot of monthly events, including Maker Mondays, where you can make a craft, so check the borough and you can see what the ongoing events are in that case. REC is also having a table dining under the stars, so if you want to learn more about all the things that REC does, you can check out their table there on Wednesday night, I believe somebody is there tonight down on State Street. Friday night is the Media Five Mile Race, and as they have been doing for as long as I can remember, REC will host a kids' fun run, this will be, I believe it's at, what is it, six o'clock? Down at Burrell Field, so it's up through, I believe, what, 12?
Oh, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, it's for kids, so if you're a kid and you want to run, come down to the field, and they do have different age categories, I just can't remember what the maximum is, but that will be this Friday.
And you get a t-shirt.
And you do get a t-shirt, yeah, so down at Burrell Field, you get a t-shirt if you run. The Rock Garden, which is kind of over here at the corner of the Borough Hall, has been updated, so you can see a lot of inspiring messages on rocks that kids throughout the borough and other people throughout the borough put on there, so that's kind of a nice thing. Beginning at the end of this month, on Friday, the 27th, there will be volleyball nights down at Burrell Field, REC has got permission to use the lights, so that will begin on Friday nights at the end of this month, and I understand there'll be two nets, so there'll be two different games going, so you show up if you want to play volleyball and want to get involved that way. Our 4th of July event is coming up, that will be on the 4th, it begins roughly at 10 o'clock, usually goes to about noon until we run out of things, but that's always a great event, and usual amenities will be there, there'll be a band, there'll be a water slide, there'll be water ice, so there are lots of fun things to do, so it's always a great event down on Burrell Field, and that'll be 10 o'clock on the 4th. And then finally, REC will be hosting movie nights, there was one this past Saturday, now we're doing an inside, because we've got a screen and we have the material, we don't have to rent it any longer, so you can check out the events on the borough website. This Friday is the only one that's on Friday, in the future, they'll be on a Saturday, it's usually the second Saturday of the month, and this Friday, it'll be the original Indiana Jones movie, The Temple of Doom, and you can see the borough schedule for what the other upcoming movies are going to be. So those are my liaison announcements, I do have a few items of business, and number two is to ratify the mass gathering permit for the Memorial Day Parade, which obviously happened, but I'm making it in the form of a motion that we officially ratify the mass gathering permit.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? I have to go back to the liaison announcement, you said the original Indiana Jones movie?
Yes.
Is it Raiders of the Lost Ark?
Raiders of the Lost Ark, yeah.
It's the Lost Ark, and it's also.
The geek that I am knows that.
July 11th.
It's July 11th, okay, thank you.
Yeah, a little out of touch, yeah, it's the original one, the original Raiders of the Lost Ark.
It's really good, thank you, just making sure, because I know there's a lot of people that may not even know that movie. Thank you, thank you. Hearing no, any discussion on the ratification of the Memorial Day Parade? Hearing none, all those in favor of ratifying the mass gathering permit for our Memorial Day Parade, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And item number three, we are going to, well, the day, are going to try to resurrect the downhill derby, I don't know if you remember that way back when, on Edgemont, so this is going to be sponsored by the Delaware County Historical Society, they're going to call it the Delco Downhill Derby, this will be on Saturday, September 27th, from 10 till 7:00 p.m., and this will be on Edgemont between Third and State, and then some of the accessory streets will be closed as well, so I'm making it in the form of a motion that we pass the mass gathering permit for the upcoming downhill derby on September 27th.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for Delaware County Historical Society's Delco Downhill Derby to be held on Saturday, September 27th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Edgemont Street between Third and State Streets, with access to Emerald Street, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And finally, I would like to pass an amended mass gathering permit for Media Fellowship House, the dance party to be held on Saturday, June 28th, from 3:00 to 8:00, with a rain date of Sunday, June 29th.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the amended mass gathering permit application for the Media Fellowship House street dance party to be held Saturday, June 28th, 2025, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. with a rain date of Sunday, June 29th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and finally, I just want to wrap up by echoing what President Pecoff said earlier, thanks to the media police for all they do, as you heard from the mayor, they had a very busy month, and as always, things have been handled very well, so thanks to the media police, and we are very safe on the Department of Defense.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Boyer? Hearing none, we will move on to Personnel, Environmental Advisory Council, and Library, Councilmember Lisa Galvin, Ms. Galvin?
Thank you. Liaison announcements, just to remind everybody that the library is indeed closed tomorrow, recognizing the holiday, also to let you know that the summer reading program has kicked off, so get your kids to color in their days that they read and bring it down for a raffle ticket, they have lots of really nice prizes, lots of Squishmallows, which are very in for the kids right now, so if you have kids, they should be reading, color it in, and take it down there and get some Squishmallows. Also, just to take a look at the library's calendar, they continually have movies and knitting and cooking and so forth. Those are the announcements. I only have one legislative item, and that is to ratify the hiring of Colin McCormick as a part-time seasonal laborer, and I bring that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of ratifying the hiring of Colin McCormick as part-time seasonal laborer for the borough, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
That concludes my report.
Any questions for Councilmember Galvin? Hearing none, we'll move on now to our Shade Tree Commission and Zoning Hearing Board, Councilmember Jen Malcoon, Ms. Malcoon?
Thank you, Mr. President, zoning hearing board did not meet last month, I don't have any announcements, just keep an eye out for what Shade Tree will be up to, there might be some fun activities and events on the horizon, getting folks together to learn more about the benefit of trees in our community. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Malcoon? Hearing none, I will move on now to sadly, our final junior councilperson report from Ms. Lydia Petrucci, I would like to add, high school graduate Lydia Petrucci. And I'm going to sort of, you know, stir the pot here, just tell us a little bit about where you're going and what your plans are for the future.
Well, I'm going to Lafayette, and I'll be studying engineering, but I haven't decided which concentration yet.
Wonderful, wonderful, and thank you for your help this year and just being a part of our council, we're glad to get it off the ground, and we look forward to it continuing and getting the input from our younger residents as well, so thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I would love to thank the council for having me on as the junior councilperson this year, it's been such a great learning experience, and I've really gained a huge appreciation for the work and dedication and planning that goes into taking care of a community. I've also met some intelligent, hardworking, kind-hearted people, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to learn from them and help you out when I could, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions for our junior councilmember?
Thanks, Lydia.
Thank you very much. Hearing none, we'll move on to our next opportunity for public comment and privilege of the floor. Again, there are two ways, you can send email to comments@mediaborough.com or speak here in person, Ms. Rapinoe, do we have any emails?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. If there's anybody present that would like to speak, please stand, state your name and address, this is your opportunity. Step to the microphone, please, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Jeff Gray, I'm running a little late, I wanted to know what the results was of the hot dog court situation?
The mobile vending ordinance passed.
Was there any decision made today?
Yes, it was approved.
What was approved?
The mobile vending ordinance will take effect August 1st, there will be two permits that will be out, one for Monday, Wednesday, and one for Tuesday, Thursday, in front of the courthouse. The ordinance is available to review, we'll have a final copy of it for you to take a look at.
So is it just, is it those days just in front of the courthouse, or is it media period, because there's other places in media we can still operate?
I believe it is just in front of the courthouse, for our right-of-way.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what this ordinance applies to.
So you can't go around the corner on different days or go anywhere else?
If you have a, if there is a property owner that is willing to allow that, that's, I believe that's something that.
Right, we can only control the borough's right-of-ways.
We can control the borough's right-of-ways, we cannot control private property.
I thought the courthouse is private property.
It is not.
It's on the borough right-of-way, so it is borough property.
So is this, is this just about the front door or around?
It's just the right-of-way, which is correct, or I'll have, it's a little bit of a distance from the road into the courthouse.
Yeah, so the easiest way to think of it is like if you had the actual property, the courthouse property, let's say it's a square, everything inside the square is the courthouse, is owned by the courthouse, not us, but the sidewalks around it are in the borough's right-of-way, and that we control the use around that.
So we can only, around the courthouse, period, you can only have two days around the courthouse, no matter if it's on the front door or the back door?
That's correct.
So it's only two days? Because we don't understand, you know, we understand there's a dispute about the front entranceway, but we're trying to figure out, could we go around on the turn in the side of the courthouse or the back of the courthouse?
One of the things that we discussed was the two corners on orange and olive, and you know, our understanding was that one of the carts would not be able to fit into those areas, so we thought the best solution would be to allow in front of the courthouse as has been, you know, where the carts have been, to allow two permits, one on Monday, Wednesday, one on Tuesday, Thursday.
So, I mean, I'm still trying to get clarity on Tuesdays and Thursdays and Mondays and Wednesday, are we allowed to go around the corner on Friday or any other day?
Ms. Foreman?
In the courthouse, around the side of the courthouse.
So this is covered in Section 2 of the ordinance, there would be a creation of Section 173-21 that basically says that there are, mobile food vendors shall not be permitted to be operated on public streets or sidewalks unless such use and operations fall within one of the following exceptions, and so we define the, excuse me, we defined, oh, sorry, we defined the mobile, the courthouse vending district as only in front of the courthouse, and there's only going to be one designated space in front of the courthouse. In terms of applying, so there's going to be an application process that will be determined at the discretion of the codes, the borough code officer, code enforcement officer, if any food vendor who is previously operating prior to the enactment of this ordinance wishes to apply and successfully applies, they will be given priority in one of those, for one of those spots, either Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, and all of this is in more detail in the ordinance that's available.
Yeah, but I understand what you're saying, but right now, it's being stipulated for two days, but the rest of the days, the three days that we're not there now, two days that we're not there now, are we allowed to go around the side of the courtroom building?
No, it's in the ordinance.
Okay, got you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name is Courtney Jones, I don't live in media, I am from media, but I work at the courthouse.
Can you state your address for the record, please?
Oh, 1036 Elmwood Avenue, Sharon Hill, PA 19079. Now, I've been working for the county for 24 years, 22 permanent years with domestic relations. There has been three areas, there used to be three areas where Augie was and Kathy, Kathy used to be right on the side with where domestic relations is, she used to be right on that side, then she moved up to the other corner, now she wants the front, so did y'all change the ordinance? to the other corner. Now she wants the front. So did y'all change the ordinance?
We...
That only one cart can be in front of the courthouse and no carts can be on the side?
That is correct.
That it has been amended?
That is correct.
There was no ordinance in place then.
There was not.
There was never, this is the first time the borough has decided to enact an ordinance covering or regulating mobile food vendors on its right-of-way.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments for us? Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn does not need a second. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.